Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Eliria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to August 7, 2013, Lorraine County Board of Commissioners Meeting. Commissioner Kerkowski has the dog.
It's not really a dog, I guess it's a dog, it's a very small dog.
Wow, not a dog.
He is full size, he's about two years old, a beagle mix. When's he available, Jack?
Saturday.
Saturday, you can come down to our dog kennel and take him home. He will be almost fully vetted when you adopt him, he'll have almost all of his shots, worms, flea medication, spade or neutered, all that, so he'll be a great dog for you and your family. So come on down if you're looking for a dog, let Lorraine County Dog Kennel be your first choice to adopt from, thank you.
Ms. Judy Netwick, the Recorder, has a public service announcement.
Would you like to join us, Judy?
Hi. Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Teresa, Mr. Cortez, Mr. Ennis. I called Teresa last week, we've had several people walk in our office about a mailing that goes out, and it pertains to a copy of your deed. It's not just in Lorraine County, but it's all over the state. And what they're doing is offering you a copy of your deed for $89. And people think they need to come in and, do I need to get this? And I've been approached by attorneys, they're calling the attorneys, so I just wanted to get the word out, a service that we do, and mandated by the Ohio Revised Code, that you can come into the office, we'll be happy to give you a copy of your deed, we'll be happy to certify it. And whoever sees this, you know, and I know there's not a lot of people here, if your neighbor gets this letter, give us a call and we're going to help you. It goes anywhere from $49.99 to $89.99, and you can get it off our website at no cost. They target certain areas, I believe.
If they come to you Judy, how much do you charge for a copy?
That's what I'm going to tell you. And I want to make, we're here 8 to 4:30, Monday through Friday, and it's $2 a page for your deed. Most deeds are, you know, front and back, at the most three dates, or three pages, and if you need it certified, which a lot of people do for, you know, certain things that they need to do, we charge a dollar, and it takes us five minutes, and the letter is saying it's going to take three weeks. When they first started, they said that we were so far behind, it's going to take six months. We're real time, and you know that. So you can also send us a request, we'll look your deed up for you, send us a self-addressed stamp envelope, we'll get it back to you. And I want to give you a phone number, if you get this letter, you know, you don't want to pay $89, I don't think, I mean, there's nothing illegal about it, but you can call the office, and we'll walk you through the website, and if you call 329-5148, we'll walk you through, the girls can help you get your deed.
Thank you so much.
So that's basically what I wanted to say. And it's been ran in the Chronicle, they've ran it for us, that it's out there, so, and I want to thank you for letting me have this time.
Absolutely. People find so many ways to rip people off, so it's unfortunate.
Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions, number one, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Yes, I'd like to hold number 1110-13, there was a $6,000 appraisal for the Soccer Academy that I had a question about, I contacted Auditor's Office, but he is out at a, somewhere, so I couldn't get my questions answered, so if you would give me until next week to research this a little farther.
It was an Auditor's...
It was for the Board of Revision appraisal for the Soccer Academy, $6,000 are, we're being charged.
Charged.
So I just wanted to find out the status of that, and I actually, I asked, called Jerry yesterday too, did you get an answer on that?
On the...
The Soccer Academy appraisal?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, so I have questions, okay, thank you.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you Commissioner, I do have a couple of potential hires, Job and Family Services, Golden Acres, that I'd like to discuss with the Board, also an update on our conciliation award with the Teamsters from Golden Acres, and the potential sale or purchase of real estate. All three of those topics are allowable for executive session discussion, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting today, we go into executive session and talk about those items identified, thank you.
Approve and waive the reading of the Commissioners' Meeting Minutes of July 31st?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve and enter into workers' compensation agreement, John L. Goodman, effective September 15, 2013 through September 15, 2015, at a cost of $1,900 per month, and contains a 30-day written cancellation clause.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorize a sales tax levy on the November 6, 2013 ballot, from the following options: For the purpose of providing additional general revenues for Lorraine County for a continuing period, an increase to the existing tax levy pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 5739.021, by the rate of 1/4 of 1%, increasing the existing tax levy pursuant to Revised Code 5741.021, by the rate of 1/4 of 1%. For the purpose of providing additional general revenues for Lorraine County for a continuing period, an increase in the existing tax levy pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 5739.021, by the rate of 1/2 of 1%, increasing the existing tax levy pursuant to Revised Code, Section 5741.021, by the rate of 1/2 of 1%. For the purpose of providing additional general revenues for Lorraine County for a three-year period, an increase of the existing tax levy pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 5739.021, by the rate of 1/4 of 1%, increasing the existing tax levy pursuant to Revised Code, Section 5741.021, by the rate of 1/4 of 1%. For the purpose of providing additional general revenues for Lorraine County for a three-year period, an increase of the existing tax levy pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 5739.021, by the rate of 1/2 of 1%, increasing the existing tax levy pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 5741.021, by the rate of 1/2 of 1%. And actually, it's November 5th, I'm sorry, I wrote it wrong, so it's November 5th election.
On Discussion Board, we've had two public hearings, I think the feeling of the Board so far on discussions was the three-year temporary increasing 1/2 of 1%, and I had the Clerk on number 13, for those of you who have the agenda, concurrently putting one of these on the ballot, since we have been talking to the 1/2 of 1%, and then reducing the inside millage collected by the county down to 1.4 mil, but instead of reducing rate, it would be suspending the collection of 1.4 mil, wouldn't it, on language?
Excuse me?
It would be suspending the collection, because we wouldn't be reducing it to give it for other political subdivisions to grab, we would be suspending the collection of it during that three-year period, Jerry?
I believe that's correct, but the resolution was reducing.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Jerry, my question being on 13...
No, I heard, yeah, I didn't hear what Teresa said.
I didn't know if it was reducing your collection, because that's what, I just took...
No, yeah, I think we want it to be suspending collection.
Correct, that's what I, when I was reading through it again and again this morning in the legal language, I should say suspending that, and it would be suspended for...
Whatever you decide.
14, 15, 16, the three-year period if we do a temporary, is that basically the agreement of the Board currently?
Yeah, just making sure that we do add in there 14, 15, and 16 for the suspension.
Yeah, the three-year term.
Right.
Concurrently with the sales tax upon passage of the November 2013 ballot.
Correct. Now, we have to bring Jerry into the conversation, we were having a little conversation out in the hall.
Sidebar?
Yeah, well, you know, I think it's very important to try to get that language into the ballot, and...
What language might that be?
As far as having the reduction of...
What we have in number 13?
Right, what we have in 13 into the ballot, and I've been asking Jerry multiple ways of trying to do it, he thinks there may be something we can put in, we would have to ask the State of Ohio, basically have them propose it, and Jerry, I'm going to have you talk to it.
Yeah, help me out Jerry, you got me confused as the ballot language, at this point...
I have to four, but ballot language goes in, I submit it all, and then they'll send me something back, and they can delete or add whatever they want to, so it's up to them actually.
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't, yeah, I think the language is pretty straightforward, the issue, you know, the issue of suspending the tax, I don't, or suspending the collection each year, I don't believe that's a voteable issue. And so we were just discussing if there's some way of putting it in the ballot, just explaining that you've passed this additional resolution. I don't, I don't think that's going to fly by the state, I don't think they'll let us put it in there, but I just have...
That's the confusion we had a couple of years ago, when it was already in effect, and it still said in the ballot language to increase 1/2 of 1% when we did it by emergency, it didn't say what you were currently paying, or to continue the tax, it said to implement a 1/2 of 1% sales tax, when people have been paying it for a year's time, and they thought it was going to go up another half a percent.
You know, because I don't want to do something that may raise a question with the validity of the language.
And then it jeopardizes us going on the ballot if it gets rejected, correct?
Well, they would just, they would just take it out.
Oh, and strike it?
But I would, I guess I'd be a little bit more concerned if they let it go on, would that somehow be viewed as limiting our ability to not reduce it in the future, because remember, as we have talked about, even though we can pass an intent to do this three years, it's a, is a year-to-year decision, because there are limitations based on your debt, so I mean, you know, even if we pass this this year and say we're reducing it for three years, if next year the numbers came back on what our debt obligations were, and those numbers say we can't reduce it to this point, it would be illegal for us to do this, and, you know, if we pass some kind of ballot language that said this was contingent upon us reducing this, I mean, Tom, I just, I just think it's a danger that I can't give you...
Well, what I want to...
I know what you want to do, but...
I understand the intent, yeah.
Are you, are you worried that if we put it in the language, and the state allows it to go on the ballot, and it passes, that basically we were mandated to do it every year?
Somebody might come back in the future and say, well, we might get ourselves in a bind whereby the one law we're required, we can't reduce it that much, and then we've passed this ballot that says we were going to reduce it.
What do you mean, we're not able to reduce it?
Well, as we have talked about, there are, there are limitations as to how far you can reduce the millage, you're not allowed to reduce it to the point where you can't cover your, your debt obligations, all right?
Well, no, I think...
I think in a three-year period, we would be all right though, because we've got enough set aside, and there shouldn't be a major...
Well, we, we may, I'm just, I'm just...
You're, you're looking at the budgetary issues of the future in those three years. I mean, if, I would be okay with putting it in there, because if we're signing a resolution, we're pretty much, we're saying...
Doing the same thing.
We're guaranteeing to do it.
I have a question, let me stop you on thinking, the question being though, is in three years, if we have to go back out for a renewal, does it still handcuff that language if that language is removed, or does it become a brand-new ballot language piece? Again, depending on what the debt service is three years from now, it no longer becomes a renewal if you change the language, correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, there's, there's just a lot of questions that that raises, and I'm comfortable, I'm uncomfortable trying to answer that just off the top of my head, to be honest with you, Commissioner.
Well, how about in the language here, because I don't have a problem with the language, if we had, while concurrently suspending up to 1.4 mils of the inside millage collected by Lorraine County, and up to, in case something fluctuates and we can only suspend 1.37 in 2016, how would that language work? I'm sorry Jerry, it's the day before we have to do this.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I was actually just talking with Jim on it, and, you know, we're going over, over this and like...
So it's all Cortez's fault.
So you go to sleep and start dreaming, Tom, and this stuff comes up with not enough time to get it.
Well, but, you know, Commissioner, I do think it's important somehow, that when somebody reads the ballot language, they understand what we're doing, what we're proposing, and we can't count on the few meetings we have here, and once or twice seeing something in the newspaper that's going to signal them for what our intent is, and if the ballot language isn't clear, how are they going to know what they're voting?
I agree, that's what I'm saying, can we say, while concurrently, I mean, it's got to be something that says, passage of this issue, and it will raise the sales tax 1/2 of 1%, while also suspending up to 1.4 mils of the inside millage collected by Lorraine County?
Yeah.
Upon passage, you know what I'm saying?
Well, what, my suggestion is that then we, 12 and 13 should be combined into one resolution.
Right.
Here's my concern.
We'll, we'll submit a couple different variations to the Board of Elections.
Well then, what would we pass here today, we're not passing the exact ballot language, we're passing the...
Well, yeah, you don't, the ballot language is not part of your resolution.
Right, that's the gray area that don't fix the Board of Elections and Secretary of State's office.
Right, that'll be something we work out and try to submit to them, so...
But it has to be submitted today.
But, but, your, your enacted resolution has to have both of those in there together as one resolution, so...
I mean, let's face facts, this is, this is a hail mary pass, we're lowering the property taxes, we're doing it temporary, if this one isn't caught in the end zone, we're out of...
Yeah, there's all of that, I mean, this is at the point, this is the last...
Right.
...opportunity to do anything, and hope we get there.
My concern is, but it's going up to, people can read into it, we stated that it would be 1.4%, or 1.4 mil, I think we're comfortable with that, looking at the numbers...
We may not be in four years, that was my question being up, because you would go for a renewal, let's say, in three years, if you change the ballot language, then it becomes a replacement, even though you're not changing any intent, but if we have to go 1.375 mils, I mean, the Board here has said we're going to go 1.4 mils, we're comfortable with that, our budget directly met with.
Right, I, I think being such a touchy issue, I would, I would rather have the language very clear, it's 1.4, and in three years if we have to do it, then we would go for a replacement instead of a renewal. Let's face it, if we don't get this, we're in dire need, I think we need to focus on today, and then worry about the ballot language in three years or four years.
I always like to make sure it's clear, Tom, I hate to get things bumped, thrown off, taken off, where the language isn't up to the Secretary of State's, based on the Revised Code like Jerry just brought up. That's what I'm saying, so then we're changing 50 different things, and we set them here, I don't think the Secretary of State would have language that, and it's not ambiguous, it is stating up to 1.4 mil, and we have said as a Board here, we're going to roll back 1.4.
Yeah, I don't know if they're going to really care if it's one, up to 1.4 or 1.4, I think the question's going to be, will they allow the language in that resolution? If they don't allow the language in there, it's going to be gone no matter what, up to or 1.4.
See, that I don't know, I don't know, that's why, again, I'll refer back to you, you gotta hold on a second.
If they bump it back out, then we could always do our side resolution like we're doing today.
We're doing it anyway, so I mean, that's why, if we can get something in it, I would prefer to have something in it, that's not a problem.
Yeah, me too.
But again, I will defer to Jerry on what he thinks the best language is going to be, can we make the phone call before we submit the language?
Well, like I said, we can submit it in the alternative.
Submit it both ways.
Yeah, we'll come up with...
To suspend collection of 1.4 mil, and suspend collection up to 1.4 mil, and either-or, they'll throw them both out, and it won't matter, because it's under Revised Code that we collect or not collect the inside millage, and then it becomes our resolution, but that would hold us up from passing this resolution today, which we can do next week, because we'll have the ballot language back in a week anyway, right? Teresa?
Uh, no.
Two weeks?
No.
Yeah, it may, it may be a while, but, I mean, we just submitted it, and then...
It's like 45 days before the election, 60 days.
Before the finished language is done?
Mm-hmm, so they'll come back to me, and we'll sign off, we'll look at it, but I mean, I talked to the Board of Elections yesterday, they were comfortable as it read, as of now, so, you know, it's up to them to, not Board of Elections, but it's up to the state to take whatever they want out, so...
Well, how about if we pass two then options?
The Board of, I mean, the ballot language is not part of...
It's not the rest of the resolution.
It's just the paperwork that needs to go down today.
But I mean, we need to pass language though, if we pass the purpose of 1/2 of 1% temporary three-year, and the Commissioners will concurrently suspend 1.4 mil collection of the inside millage, and then we'll suspend up to 1.4 mil, and see which one they go with.
Well, I don't think that's going to...
You don't think I'll vary either way, they'll throw it in, or I, okay.
So I think, just to add on here, that we're suspending the inside millage 1.4 for, concurrently of the three-year sales tax.
Upon passes of the...
Right, okay.
Ballot language, but then we don't need the resolution unless they come back to get us on the backside in 40, 45 days prior, because right now we're about 90 days out. Is that good, Jerry?
Yeah.
So we get rid of 13, the resolution, we're going to include that language in the passing of...
Yeah, we're just all doing this in one resolution.
You want to read that Teresa then, can you combine it for us, since we haven't read 13 yet?
Um, for the purpose...
Oh, hang on, let me give David some comments, I'm sorry David.
Thank you Commissioner, David Ashenhurst Overland, Garrison Keeler is 71 years old today, he has a whole lot of things about the police vehicles, and I want, may I suggest that you, first of all, whatever you can include in the ballot language, of course you can include it in the explanations of the ballot, but I realize you want to memorialize your intent to suspend, and I, my own suggestion would be, say, up to 1.4, to the extent allowable by law, and then even cite the sections of the Ohio Revised Code that would not permit you to suspend collection to 1.4 if your debt ceiling required 1.35.
Well, that was my concern I brought up, but I don't think we have enough pages to cite Revised Code in a ballot language, David.
No, I understand, but I mean, to the, if, if what the language says is to the extent permitted by law, and you have something where it's not permitted to suspend all 1.4 of it, you've got it in there, and you've got the up to, because you really are saying, if we are not permitted by law to suspend 1.4, we aren't going to suspend 1.4. Just a suggestion, Garrison Keeler is 71.
Okay, David.
Yeah, I thought about that, I just don't know whether you want to...
How much do we want to expand the language on this ballot? It's a confused vote, we're already confused.
I'm thinking it's a simpler approach, where we are, it's a temporary three-year sales tax with a rollback of 1.4 inside mil for those three years.
But when you say that, nobody, the general public does not know what 1.4 inside millage is, so you need to say a rollback on property taxes.
Right, okay, inside millage, property tax.
Well, again, the languages are important, Tom, that's why we're debating it, not casually, we don't want, we don't want to debate this and get confusion, let's throw out the language with Jerry here, publicly, on TV, how we're going to state it.
Right, well, and this is the reason I brought this up, because being at multiple festivals yesterday, people wanted to know, is it in the language, I don't, they don't care about it, it's their resolution, they want to know, is in, in the language, if it's in the language, they said, you got my support, because they believe that's a guarantee, even though we're telling them, we're going to honor it, they want to see it on the ballot language.
I had a lot of people out there, yesterday, it was National Night Out, I gave the opening remarks for that, I guess you showed up later, they said.
Yeah, I came in with Congressman Jordan.
Uh, and actually somebody walked up to me, and said, you're going to suspend all of our property taxes? I said, no. Well, they don't understand, you know what I'm saying, I mean, it's got to be very clear what it is, it's the 1.4 inside millage, but again, Jerry, I'd like this language to be very succinct and understandable to the public, because nobody knows what inside millage is, when I say that to people, they're totally confused.
Exactly, that's why we have to make it, I think it's a three Ts, teaching, educating the public, trust, and transparency, that's what we have to do with this whole situation, and by doing what you've suggested today, by putting that, resolu, instead of a resolution actually being in the ballot language, I mean, takes the trust thing out of it, you know, we don't have, they don't, we don't have to worry if they trust us or not, it's there, so, I mean, there's...
Right, you pass it, it's there, we can't go back on it, it's, yeah, I agree, so, with the language, to your point Ted, Teresa, if I see you're working over there on that...
I'm trying.
She's working diligently, and we'll probably hold this up a minute while they write some stuff.
I mean, I was going to try to take this resolution and read it all together, and then if you guys agree on it, and I know Jerry's probably got writings over there too, but I don't know.
Again, yeah, let's get this kind of clear here, guys, we're kind of all over the board, it's what, Jerry, your suggestion is our legal counsel, how would it best be included? And will we say something here, because this is what's going to hit the newspaper, what we do here today, and what's going to hit the TV on the weekend?
Well, the, the, number 13 should read, suspend the collection.
Is that how we get the, the used, those other resolutions use that word rate, Teresa?
Um, yeah, reduce the rate, that's how, that's where I got it from, but I was going to kind of put that under this last word as, the suspension word.
Okay, and we'd say suspend the rate of collection, if you want to put real property taxes.
Again, that's language, that's why I'm asking you.
Yeah, let's just leave property taxes in there.
Mm-hmm.
See, this tells you, we don't do a lot of backroom deals, where's Brad at? We actually just talk about everything out here on the floor.
And instead of the word based, I would put contingent upon.
Contingent upon passage of the, the, upon passage of the issue?
Yeah, we probably put on the passage...
Because it'll be an issue number.
The passage of this, this issue.
Right.
Right, because it'll be considered an issue, it'll get a number as an issue.
I have a question, where does, the suspension of the collection of property taxes, where would we include the three years? Where does, the suspension of the collection of property taxes, where would we include the three years?
It's concurrent, it's supposed to be concurrent with the language, that's what we're talking about doing.
All right, I just wanna make sure it's clearly written in the paper.
Yeah, we don't have that, do you have a longer resolution or is this it?
Uh-huh. That's what I'm saying, these were, I was going to combine and under that last whereas.
Oh, is this the one I have?
Yes, to conclude all deception done.
Okay, hang on just a second.
I should go back.
Are you sure you have the same paperwork?
I don't know.
Yeah, the draft here.
It's the same one I have?
Yeah.
It's, it's point two, not one point four, because it's a reduction from one point six to one point four, not suspending all one point four of it, right?
No, it'd be suspending one point four of the one point six we're given. We get one-
We get one point six.
Yeah, the explanation, David's question was about on the inside millage, we collect a little bit over one point six, is what we're given by the Ohio Revised Code to collect. We have point, the difference between that and the one point four is what we use to pay debt, it's dedicated to debts, loans, the Justice Center, whatever. So we have the one point four mil of that one point six is used for general fund expenditures, we will suspend collection, one point four mils, correct. It's eight point three million dollars, David.
Yeah, no, I mean, so you are suspending as much as you can of the inside millage.
Correct.
That was my concern, that's why I wanna make sure the ballot language is proper. You know, it takes us right there, there's no-
While they're going over-
That's getting changed, we're getting rid of that, it's gonna be combining the language, I changed suspend the collection of, David, that's where we got in that discussion about suspending collection. Under thirteen on your agenda, those of you looking, it was gonna be a separate resolution by the Commissioners, reducing the rate of. We're changing that to suspend the collection of.
It's only reducing the rate here, point two.
It's going to reduce the rate point two, from one point six, it's gonna, we're gonna, we're only gonna collect point two. That's what we're changing all the language on, David, that's what we're working on. Correct, it's, that's why I started the conversation, I didn't think it was right, so, that's where we ended up here today.
And while they're figuring that out, I just-
It was confusing of that, so.
I had a phone call yesterday from one of our constituents who said, you know, I just bought a car yesterday, do you know how much prop- or sales tax I paid for that car? She says, whatever you do, don't raise the sales tax. And I, I wanna just be very clear for everybody that at six point two five, five point five of that goes to the state. Okay, so, the county gets a half and the jail gets a quarter. That's what adds up to our six point two five, um, current sales tax rate. And out of the jail, the, the jail does not, cannot survive on that quarter percent that it got voted in years ago. We, out of that half that we get, like about four million dollars of that half has to go to jail, to the jail to provide funds for operations. So, I mean, when we're asking for a sales tax, I, I hope people realize that this is your neighborhood, this is your backyard, this is your justice system, this is your services that you rely on or your neighbors rely on every single day. You know, the, the state's getting the majority of that, five point five percent, we're getting a half a percent. So, it's, it's not a huge increase, and again, the other thing, we're the lowest, one of the lowest sales tax rates in the state of Ohio, one of the largest counties in the state of Ohio. And, uh, what did you bring up, the inside millage, we're lowest on inside millage, we're talking about today too, so. I would just hope that we can educate everybody and help them understand exactly, um, what county government does. I, I'm going to have a, a pie chart or a, a, the tax distribution on the actual property taxes too. I don't wanna just rattle off some numbers, so maybe next week I'll have this in a format to, to put out here and, and give copies to the newspapers to help us promote this too. Because out of the, the property taxes, the county doesn't get much of that either.
What we're concerned about here, is what you're gonna see.
Figure it out.
Yeah.
I'm gonna read.
I'm not sure, hang on, I'm just down there with Jerry.
Okay, we don't need this one right now.
This is why we need a ministry session.
Very good.
Well, it's kinda hard doing it from the floor here, it didn't come up earlier.
Yes.
So, I mean, we're trying to wing it at this point.
Because I'm, I'm grievously concerned that we're not gonna convey the proper message.
Actually, this needs to be done, yeah.
The, uh, this, this is, as I said, and I, and I mean that, this is a bit of a hail Mary pass. And we're, we're flexing everything we can flex and, and, and putting everything on the table that can possibly be put there. We're facing a four to five million dollar hole, and I do not see any one-time-
Fixes.
Fixes that are gonna come along, and we've been able to, uh, deal with a lot of this, and we're already down, you know, millions and millions of dollars. And, you know, people talk about getting through the, you know, the, the fat to the muscle, uh, the next chop is gonna be through the bone. So, uh, the severity of this requires the utmost attention to make sure we convey the message to the taxpayers that we're looking for a temporary partnership.
Well, like our first public hearing we had, Mr. Friend came up and very skeptical of, uh, public officials and, you know, you say you're gonna do this, but, you know, how do we know you're telling us the truth and what's our guarantee? So, this is probably one of those things where those, this is a good, good thing to have it right there in the ballot language.
I think Mr. Cassidy was more entertaining, though.
Yeah.
Well, at that, uh, at the festivals and even just talking to people, I was at Green Circle Growers. People were, they're like, we never seen a property tax reduction.
Yes, they have, twice, we lower TB and then when they took Gold Nakers off, the county's done it twice.
But they're looking-
We got a pretty good track record.
Yeah.
But, uh, as far as looking at it, you know, it's a little bit more money, they haven't seen it, so they're a little skeptical of it, so. It's, um, if we can get in the language, that's gonna be great.
Right.
All right.
Okay, I'm gonna read what number twelve resolution, or, yeah, twelve resolution in combination with thirteen resolution sounds like, and then we'll go from there. In the matter of increasing the sales and use tax pursuant to Revised Code fifty-seven thirty-nine point oh-two-one and fifty-seven forty-one point oh-two-one by one half of one percent for a three-year period of time for the purpose of providing additional general revenues for Lorraine County. The Board of Commissioners in Lorraine County met a regular session on August seventh, two thousand thirteen with all members present. Whereas notices were given on July twelfth and July nineteenth, two thousand thirteen, in the Chronicle Telegram and Morning Journal, that public hearings would take place on July, or, I should say, did take place. On July thirty-first, two thousand thirteen, at nine forty-five, and the second public hearing was held on August fifth, two thousand thirteen, at five thirty P M. And whereas Lorraine County Commissioners passed the two thousand fourteen tax budget of approximately fifty-six million dollars with the estimated revenues of approximately forty-four point five million dollars. And whereas the projected carryover through two thousand thirteen is approximately six million dollars. And whereas without additional revenue, the Board projects a shortfall of approximately five point five to six million annually, which will require future layoffs and cuts. And whereas even without a shortfall through, for two thousand thirteen, there will not be sufficient funds available to operate fiscal year two thousand fourteen. And whereas the sale and use tax in Lorraine County is one of the lowest in the state of Ohio. And whereas the current millage levied for current expenses of Lorraine County within the ten mil limitation is one point six mils. And whereas Lorraine County Commissioners currently believes the maximum amount permitted by the Ohio Constitution. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners by resolution will levy only one point four mil for current expenses within the ten mil limitation. And whereas the reduction of millage levied by the Board of Commissioners proposed herein that will not be levied is point two mils. And whereas the tax year in which the suspension of the collec- of the collection of property taxes levy shall be, concurrent in year two thousand fourteen, fifteen and sixteen. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners shall suspend from one point six mils to one point four mils the amount of current millage levied for current expenses of Lorraine County within the ten mil limitation in accordance with the Ohio Risk Code fifty-seven point oh-five point thirteen. Be it further resolved, can, this resolution is contingent upon the passage of the point five oh sales tax increase on November two thousand thirteen ballot. Be it further resolved by the Board of Commissioners that we hereby propose to increase the sales and use tax pursuant to our Ohio Revised Code fifty-seven thirty-nine point oh-two-one and fifty-seven forty-one point oh-two-one by one half of one percent for a three-year period of time for the purpose of general operating revenues in Lorraine County for one. The purpose of providing additional general revenues for Lorraine County pursuant to Revised Code section fifty-seven thirty-nine point oh-two-one levy an increase of the existing rate of tax by one half of one percent for a three-year period of time upon every retail sale made in Lorraine County except sales of watercraft and outboard motors required to be titled pursuant to chapter fifteen forty-eight of the Revised Code and sales of motor vehicles. And said tax shall be in addition to the tax levy by section fifty-seven thirty-nine point oh-two of the Revised Code and any tax levy pursuant to sections fifty-seven thirty-nine point oh-two-three or fifty-seven thirty-nine point oh-two-six of the Revised Code. Two, for the purpose of providing additional general revenues for Lorraine County pursuant to Revised Code section fifty-seven forty-one point oh-two-one levy an increase of the existing rate of tax by one half of one percent for a three-year period of time on the storage, use or other consumption in Lorraine County of the following. One, motor vehicles and watercraft and outboard motors required to be titled in Lorraine County pursuant to chapter fifteen forty-eight of the Revised Code and acquired by transactions subject to the tax imposed by section fifty-seven thirty-nine point oh-two of the Revised Code. And two, in addition to the tax imposed by section fifty-seven forty-one point oh-two of the Revised Code tangential personal property and services subject to the tax levy by the state of Ohio provided in section fifty-seven forty-one point oh-two of the Revised Code. And tangential personal property and services purchased in another county within the state of Ohio by a transaction subject to the tax imposed by section fifty-seven thirty-nine point oh-two of the Revised Code. And said tax levy pursuant to section fifty-seven forty-one point oh-two-one of the Revised Code on the storage, use or other consumption of tangential personal property and on the benefit of service realized shall be in addition to the tax levy by section fifty-seven forty-one point oh-two of the Revised Code. Except as provided in division D of section fifty-seven forty-one point oh-two-one of the Revised Code any tax levy pursuant to sections fifty-seven forty-one point oh-two-two and fifty-seven forty-one point oh-two-three of the Revised Code that pursuant to fifty-seven thirty-nine point oh-two-one B two and fifty-seven forty-one point oh-two-one A that the Board of Elections of Lorraine County submit the question of tax increase to electors in Lorraine County at the next general election, November fifth, two thousand thirteen, to become effective April first, two thousand fourteen.
Can you repeat that?
Just kidding, just kidding.
I'm gonna make the motion.
Ted, excuse me, the only thing is, I want the sales tax first. And then the reduction would be in the, you had, you had it, the sales, the real estate, uh, suspension, I want that to be the second as further resolved. So in other words, just in the reverse order that you read it.
Okay.
I made the motion.
I'll second.
Now a discussion point. That language can be adjusted to meet the intent of the Board, if there's something that it's of, whereas, who, for, whatever can be adjusted. Intent of the Board is to put on the ballot raising the sales tax, one half of one percent in Lorraine County. Concurrently lowering the collec- suspending the collection of inside millage, one point four mils for the term lasting three years.
Upon passage of-
Upon passage of, that's our intent, so if the language has to be changed at all, that's the intent of the Board, agreed?
Agreed.
Go ahead, call for the vote, Teresa.
Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye. Yeah, I think that's, if there's, if the language can go through, I think that's actually huge what we just passed.
I agree, but without a doubt.
We're, we're saying that, uh, for three years, we are guaranteeing with the sales tax increase, you're gonna get a property tax reduction.
And I'm looking right now at a, a tax bill of a house in the city of Aliria with a total, the total value of the house is ninety-eight five. So that's what they're, we're basing, um, your savings on. The total that comes from the, to the general fund for, out of a nine hundred and eighty-six dollar, um, bill for a half of a year is twenty-one dollars and seventy-six cents. So you can figure that times two, if you had like a ninety-eight thousand dollar house or a hundred thousand dollar house, so, um, like forty-four, forty-five dollars a year savings. And you have to do the math, how many times are you gonna spend fifty cents to make up that forty-four dollars?
You gotta spend over, forty-five be nine thousand dollars.
Nine thousand dollars, so, if you spend nine thousand dollars, it's a wash.
Right.
If you don't spend nine thousand dollars, you're ahead.
It's nine thousand dollars on taxable item.
Right.
Taxable item, yeah, right.
Right, and for a hundred thousand dollar house, so if you're looking at two or three hundred thousand, it's gonna be multiple.
You have to do the math yourself, we can't do it all for you.
No, they're gonna ask us too, I mean, that's what we're here for, they're gonna ask us all, my property's worth two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, what do I save?
Yeah.
Well, when I was at the one festival, the guy was like, well, my house value is a hundred and fifty thousand. And he's like, let me pull up my calculator, and his wife gave him the answer like that.
Seventy bucks.
So, i- it was good, but, they're appreciative of that.
Smartphones and calculators right on your phone, or you could have one just built in your head like Commissioner Kahlo.
Yeah, just give Ted a call.
Yeah, call Ted.
How smart is the phone when it is choosing?
Madam Clerk, number fourteen, please.
Under community development, award contract to Don Mull's plantation, North Ridgeville, the amount of four thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars for landscaping the four NSP homes on Albany Avenue in Sheffield Township. KF Construction excavating Clyde had landscaping in the original contract, but change order number eight deleted this portion, deducting five thousand from the retainage and payment. July sixteenth, three proposals were received, this being the most responsive and will be paid from account, contract services. Issue notice to proceed honor before August seventh and complete honor before August thirtieth.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Award contract to J. Kilby Enterprises, Inc., North Ridgeville, the amount of eighty-eight hundred dollars, which includes a contingency for any unforeseen change orders for Jason and Kelly Swan at one-three-three Forest Hill Drive, Amherst, to receive grant assistance to install a new roof. Nineteen invitations were sent, three received, this being the most responsive complying with specifications.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Just for the record, their last name, they, it's not Swain anymore, correct? It's, uh, it's another last name, they just recently got married? Okay, so, just, probably shouldn't be Swain on there, should be their new name, her new name.
Whatever the paperwork was filled out in, right?
Yeah.
We're all good with that, okay.
Under Clerk Court's approval and enter in a lease agreement with Mica Properties Three LLC for Mayflower Square, consisting of eighteen hundred square feet at two-two-nine Old Crusky Drive, Amherst, effective November first, two thousand thirteen, through October thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. And the total amount is seventy-two hundred dollars, payable two thousand dollars per month. Clerk Court's office will relocate the title office from Lorraine County Visitors Bureau, Levitt Road, because the current space is inadequate for amount of business and new location is doubled to better serve the taxpayers without incurring high renovation cost.
This is back in our agenda from last week, Commissioner Williams asked it to be pulled while he had some discussions. I spoke with the owner of Lighthouse Village and spoke with Ron Nabokowski. Ron Nabokowski came back, that the Lighthouse Village was discussed at one point, but the rental cost was double of what this current contract is. Mr. Nabokowski also said, number two, accessibility to the public. The title office opened in Amherst Township primarily to improve accessibility for county residents in western and southwestern Lorraine County. Secondarily, the visitors bureau location was chosen to help the bureau and its credit of Lorraine County Port Authority. Moving to Lighthouse Village, however, would not be helpful in improving accessibility to residents in the south and southwest of the county. Before being offered the Crusky Drive location, which is the current BMV but is moving, we had intended to search for a location closer to Overland than to Lorraine. Our decision to move to Crusky Drive was based on our belief that this location is unique in the county. Crusky Drive offers superior visibility from slow-moving vehicles and the right demographic for maximizing our passport volume on the county's west side. We sincerely believe it will help us increase county revenues from that source because the county general fund receives the money from the passports. Finally, we have already negotiated reasonable lease terms with the owner of the Crusky Drive location. Your earliest approval therefore is requested.
Yeah, the size of the facility at the Lighthouse was larger, that's why increased it, it was about eleven hundred dollars more, um, on there. The reason I wanted to have it pulled is, he thought it was gonna be much more, they were asking like twenty-two dollars a square foot there. And, um, they were willing to give them a break, but, uh, after talking with them, um, and their explanation as far as why they wanna have it there with the increased traffic, I'm okay with, I just wanted to give them the opportunity because you talked about having the BMV and the Title Bureau closer together, so.
Also moved then.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the engineer, award contract to J. L. Riker, Inc., Aliria, the amount of a-
Under the engineer, award contract to J L Reichert, Inc., Galyrian, the amount of a hundred and sixty-five thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars for Redford Road Bridge, zero zero two two, deck replacement, Columbia Township. Three bids received on July thirtieth, this being the most responsive complying with specifications. Issue notice to proceed and complete all work by November eighth. There are no substitutions, but will use U S Bridge Cambridge as material supplier. Engineer's estimate was a hundred and fifty-six thousand, but is within the ten percent requirement and will be funded by O dot state infrastructure loan and be paid from account M V G D at service.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the treasurer, award depository of public funds contract as reviewed and recommended by the county treasurer for active deposits for period of August twenty third, two thousand thirteen, through August twenty second, two thousand seventeen. First Merit Bank, Lorraine National Bank, U S Bank, P and C Bank, and J P Morgan Bank at a hundred and fifty-five million dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Portes?
No further comments, I want to thank you.
Mr. Anus?
I don't have anything for executive session.
Commissioners report.
Uh, it's been a busy week, um, talking to people about the sales tax and trying to educate them on that. We recently found out that our dog, uh, warden was retired, or resigning, so I've been in, uh, many discussions with our, uh, director, not our director, our medical director for the dog kennel, who is Dr. Woods, to determine what we should do to go forward, uh, also talk with, um, Greg Wiley from the Animal Protective League and trying to determine how best to go forward with, uh, replacing Jack. We have a lot of good things happening at the, at the dog kennel that I want to make sure keep going, so, well, time will tell, see what we're gonna do. We are at, accepting applications, so if you have ran a business or, and ran, managed people and know things about dogs, I would, uh, ask you to go ahead and apply. Thank you very much.
Yeah, busy week, uh, everybody's aware of the sales tax ring, sparse crowd on Monday night, but again, some support and nice suggestions from the people who were here. Yesterday, I was in Wellington at the Community College, uh, giving the opening, we had a creative financing seminar that our community development department put on, I'd like to commend Dawn and Don for, uh, putting together a real nice program. Keith Bailey was there to speak from our solid waste, Mike Challander was there, uh, had a wide mix, manufacturers, not-for-profits, uh, looking for ways to do financing moving forward. They had fifty-three pre-reservations, actually, I didn't open up a second room at the Wellington campus and beam it over, so there were enough seats for everyone to participate. Also, as I said before, like to thank the Sheffield Township trustees for inviting me to the National Night Out and giving the opening remarks. So twenty-ninth annual year nationwide for National Night Out, it's the seventh one in Sheffield Township, talking about the community partnership with policing and letting criminals know that people are fighting back and they're not going to put up with what's going on. Great turnout, again, great job by the Sheffield Township trustees, the Sheriff Department, Tom Kelly was there, uh, Township Fire Department, it was a great turnout, and I missed it, but I believe they were bringing in the helicopter too, correct?
Yeah, they did.
Did it get there when you were there?
Yeah.
Okay, it wasn't there by the time I had to leave, so. End of my report.
You know, it's August, so that's festival month, and, uh, it's been packed, I've, um, been out to Saint Peter's, Saturday was just insane, they had so many festivals were going on. Sheffield Township had their steak fry for the fire department, a great event out there, good steaks, and, um, uh, yesterday I spent the day with Congressman Jim Jordan going around to different, um, facilities, we stopped at a Green Circle Growers, wonderful facility. I've been able to tour that multiple times, but still, just amazing, a hundred acres out there, they're down to ninety-five after the fire, but just the technology that goes in there, you know, the temperature control, everything. Family-owned business, good people, and, um, out to Camden Township, followed out to Sheffield Township for the night outs, so. I'm sure, uh, multiple festivals going on this week, Corn Festival, um, I can't remember how many, there's about six festivals, so.
There's a boatload of things every weekend time, welcome to the reelection campaign mode.
A little early, but what the hell.
Uh, not really reelection, but I've been doing a lot of talking with individuals about the, the sales tax with the property tax, and been getting good support on that, so once you explain to people this is how much you're looking at a hundred thousand dollar home, they start looking at that and then doing the math and realizing that it's gonna be, uh, they'll save a couple bucks a year.
That's what the intent basically has been, and my conversation is the same, when you explain to them, the inside millage is really confusing, so we have to get that right, right, Kaylee? The inside millage we're rolling back. So, we really gotta get that out so they understand what it is.
Well, we talked about other things, that's why.
Most people don't see a tax bill anymore because they pay their taxes with their house payment.
Right, that's why.
So they don't read their tax bill to say what it actually says.
We're, we're not actually rolling it back.
We're suspending the collection, correct, suspending the collection of. I know the language, I'm sorry, didn't mean, I was talking, right, you're right.
Ninety-seven school districts out there running in to capture some inside, free inside millage.
Right, we're suspending the collection of, well, that's why I had it in, in that resolution thirteen, make sure it said suspend, so. End of my report.
And that was yours?
That was his.
That was my report.
I was gonna say.
My report, wow.
These sinuses are killing me, I'm just, I'm like in and out.
Yeah, uh, we'll see you out and about, enjoy the summer, and make sure you get out to the Corn Festival.
Yep, parades at two, I think.
What's that?
Parades at two.
Parade, oh, on Sunday?
Yeah, parades at two.
I, I found a new way to make corn, by the way.
Microwave?
No, you just put it right in the oven at four hundred, right in the husk, four hundred for about twenty-five minutes, twenty-three, twenty-five minutes, take it out, cut the end off, and everything just falls off of it, and it's perfect.
Do you make it or do you cook it?
Cook it, sorry, did I say make corn? Cook corn. Prepare, prepare corn.
Madam Clerk?
The Commissioners will not meet Wednesday, August twenty-first, board correspondents?
Move the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning? Motion going executive session is outlined by the county administrator?
Second.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine thirty at the Administration Building, two twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at W W W dot LorraineCounty dot U S. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.